I called to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on March 18th, 2024 at 7:03 PM. To connect to the council meeting, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For public comments tonight, those will be taken online and you may post those comments with any link at LakewoodSpeaks.org. Let me say that again. LakewoodSpeaks.org, that is our online forum for public comments. We are leaving that online public comment forum open during the study session and actually throughout into tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. So anybody watching tonight or in the morning would still have the opportunity to go ahead and leave comments on tonight's topics. Zoning, the two topics we'll be covering this evening are, one is zoning text amendment regarding accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs. And then secondly, we will be having a presentation and a conversation around housing affordability option recommendations from our planning commission. With that, I will hand the floor over to the clerk. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Over.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Ryan.
Yes.
Charazai.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
And Six.
Here.
Ms. Strom, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. And our first topic this evening, yes.
Yeah, Councilor Nystrom wasn't announced, that's just what I wanted to say. So for the record, Councilor Nystrom served.
Thank you.
Got it, Councilor Nystrom, sorry about that.
No worries.
Sorry about that. All right, moving on to topic number one this evening, zoning text amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. With that, I will go ahead and hand the floor over to Travis Parker, our Director of Planning, to introduce her speaker this evening and give us a little background on the topic.
Good evening, Chair. And if, and I see Kip Kolkmeier here as well. Good evening, we're here to chat tonight about ADUs. If you recall, the city council requested that the planning commission look into ADUs last summer. The specific language was a request for the planning commission to study barriers to ADU construction and bring back suggestions for updates to our codes that will support an increase in this naturally occurring affordable housing stock. So the planning commission met several times between August and November of last year. And here to present their work and their recommendations is the Chair of the Planning Commission, Chair Kolkmeier.
Thank you very much, Director, Mayor, and members of the city council. Should I jump right in? Without objection, I will. So as the Director indicated, this is the set of recommendations that we are bringing back to city council based on your request. We're talking about ADUs first. Those are accessory dwelling units. These are often known by names like an in-law unit, a grandparent flat, a carriage house, a casita, the apartment over the garage, things like that. While it is a separate living unit, what it is not, it is not a duplex, it is not a condo. These units cannot be separately sold. They are only allowed accessory to the principal use on that lot. In our current zoning ordinance, as we analyzed it, we concluded that they're pretty heavily regulated in Lakewood and there are very significant barriers. We identified, as I think was also in the housing study, that they are expressly prohibited in 40% of all single-family residential districts. They're limited in size to only 700 square feet and only one bedroom. They are prohibited from using the most basic flexibility that is applicable to the main structure on the lot, such as variances, seeking waivers. And there are additional requirements that are imposed on them, such as deed restrictions and parking requirements. So it was not a surprise to us when we learned that in over 10 years, only 25 ADUs have been permitted in our entire city. Just for comparison, there are 42,400 single-family homes in Lakewood. 25 of them have ADUs. So as a statistical matter, they really don't exist. Now, let's be clear, the biggest barrier is excessive water and sewer tap fees. The fees charged by water districts and private water companies, sewer districts to connect to water and sewer, they are exceptionally high in Lakewood. Five to 10 times what Denver Water would charge for a similar connection. So that cannot be underemphasized, that is a huge barrier. And that's not something the city council has a lot of power over. But these recommendations for planning commission do try to increase flexibility and change the economics, and we think that will offset some of the excessive and irresponsible tap fees. So what do we recommend? Allow them in more places, allow more economical configurations, and remove unnecessary requirements. The first most important thing is take off the minimum lot requirement for ADU of 9,000 square feet. So that where the vast majority of our housing is in an R1-6 district, they would be allowed to take advantage of this tool. They currently are not. Secondly, 700 square feet and one bedroom is not an economical way to build, especially if you have to pay a massive tap fee. So we're suggesting that that be increased to 1,400 square feet and allow more than one bedroom. We're also suggesting that they be allowed to at least request variances and waivers where it might be possible to meet with the zoning codes intents and purposes. The current structure on all these lots already has the ability to seek those, why not ADUs? We are also recommending that we eliminate the requirement that a covenant be filed to make this permanently deed restricted, that an owner of, has to actually live in one of those two units, and I'm sure we're going to get some questions on that. But I can explain why it is the planning commission is recommending what we're recommending. And we would suggest taking off some of the restrictions. A good example of that is the off-street parking requirement. In many parts of our city, we learned from the parking study that off-street parking is not a problem in those areas, you shouldn't have this extra requirement. But if it's truly needed, then it should still be applicable, and that's what we're suggesting. I would not describe these changes as dramatic, but they are compromises, but they did receive almost unanimous support on the planning commission, only one commissioner voted no. It's also important to note that even if all of these recommendations were approved, there's no automatic change to any setback, any height limitation, any site coverage restriction, all of those that already applied would continue to apply to those same lots. All we're suggesting, as it relates to variances and waivers, is that the property owner be given the opportunity to make that case. As it relates to public engagement, we've received not a large number of comments, but of the comments we did receive, including the ones that were posted on Lakewood Speaks for this meeting, overwhelmingly were supportive. You heard from a lot of folks that don't usually comment, talking about their individual circumstances and how they would appreciate the opportunity for some additional flexibility. In addition, as I think the Director mentioned, we had a study session on the planning commission August 23rd of 2023, and we took public comment in public hearings on October 4th, October 18th, November 8th, and November 15th. So what we clearly heard was a desire to add additional flexibility. With that, I did not bring a PowerPoint presentation, because this recommendation comes from planning council, is pretty short, pretty direct. It is a redline version of the changes that we would recommend that be made to the current code, and I would be happy to answer any questions about these recommendations and go into any further detail that anyone would like to hear.
Director Parker, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we staff supports the recommendations and we're here for questions as well.
Okay, well, thank you Commissioner Kolkmeier for your presentation this evening and for the entire planning commission for all the work that you've done. This is definitely a topic that we have heard of interest from some of our residents at landing on your lap this last year. I will note also for community members that are either watching tonight and/or watching online in the days to follow, that there is also, there are more details with regards to those proposed changes that are available on LakewoodSpeaks.org as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up for council questions, comments, et cetera, and we'll throw in the brief reminder that we are operating or starting to practice operating under Bob's Rules of Order, which has us, in an effort to really focus on efficiency in our meeting, limiting ourselves to five minutes each. So just a refresher on that, and with that, we'll start, we'll go Councilor Over, Councilor Mayat Guerrero, Councilor LeBure. Councilor Over, you have the floor.
I'm setting my stopwatch there. Okay, you're talking about the 700 square feet, and you want to move that to a 1,400 square feet. Where, where did those numbers come from? I mean, somebody came up with 700 square feet originally, they must have had a reason for that. And then you've gone to 1,400 square feet, then there must be a reason why you went to 1,400 and not 1,300 and not 1,100. And from, so that's the question, but the background on that one, my first house was 800 square feet. My current house is only 1,500 square feet. And so, I mean, to me, if you're going to 1,400, you're, you're building another house. It's not an ADU anymore. It's a, you know, you're putting two houses there. So that seems high to me. But could you talk about why, where that first 700 number came from?
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you, Councilor. That's a really important point to start at. 10 years ago, before the current ordinance was adopted, something happened. The state legislature saw a tool that they wanted municipalities to adopt, and they passed a law that said cities have to allow ADUs. What happened after that was this set of regulations that frankly are exceptionally strict and were meant to allow pretty limited development of ADUs, and they have succeeded. So that's the context of where the 700 comes from, it's meant to discourage, it's a barrier, all right? Now, in terms of the 1,400, the 1,400 is admittedly an arbitrary number that is based upon a compromise. We heard from folks that there shouldn't be any limitation, and here's the reason why there shouldn't be any limitation, we heard. Because right now, if you had a 1,500 square foot house, and based on the size of the lot, you could build a 3,000 square foot house, what difference should it make if that was an ADU plus a smaller house or just a giant house? So that would be an argument for having no limitation. I'm not sure, and maybe Director Parker can, can speak to what the average square footage is, but we did hear from a number of people that 1,400 was still below what the average size of a home would be in Lakewood. And that's what we were able to get a consensus and a strong majority vote on, but there is, I think, compelling arguments for going even farther.
Director Parker, did you want to add anything?
I don't have anything to add. I've been racking my brain to try and think back 12 years to when the 700 was created. And what seems to be coming into my head was at the time, we were looking at a 21 square, 100 square foot house at three stories, being about an average size home in Lakewood, and looking at one of those stories being convertible. And what we've found since then is that more often than not, when people want to convert an entire story, an entire basement to an ADU, it's generally greater than 700 square feet, and it creates problems when they have an 800 or 900 square foot basement and can only convert 700 of it to an ADU.
Thank you. Councilor Mayat Guerrero.
So to, I'm going to first just follow up a little bit on where Councilor Over with lines of questions, which is, I think you mentioned something, Mr. Kolkmeier, about, you know, if there was a smaller house already on the property, they built a bigger house or like just got to expand a house based on the total lot size. So the current red lines, would it, do anything else to limit the total size of buildings in various zones, the total? Like, the other ways that the land use can be built? Like, is there a way where somebody could then add, you know, eight ADUs on their property? I don't think that that's the answer, but I think that that is sort of where some of the questions from community I've been getting are coming from, so I'd love clarification.
Sure, thank you, Councilor. The, this still, our recommendation limits it, limits it to a single ADU on the lot. We're not recommending that there be multiple ADUs, though we did hear that some would like to see that flexibility, that is not a part of the recommendation. And to your first point, you are absolutely right, this does not change any of the dimensional limitations on the structure, on the structure, the main structure that's on that property right now. So if there's a 15-foot side setback, you know, 15-foot rear setback, and a no more than X percent of site coverage, all of those things still apply. So you're talking about putting this ADU within that envelope. Now again, we are saying that ADU should have the same flexibility as every other structure on those lots, where they can come to the city and ask for variances or waivers. And you all may be very familiar with variances or waivers, but a variance is only granted if the property owner can prove that there's something so tough about their lot, their site, that they need some accommodation from one of those dimensional standards. And a waiver is only granted if it improves the design of the structure. So both of those are in the interest of the city from a planning perspective, and we think that flexibility would logically be applicable to ADUs as well.
Great, thank you. And then, my other question was about, to just follow up on tap and sewer fees, which I know this particular conversation is not aimed to shift or change, but I'm wondering if in your research, you all found specific servers, or service providers that were sort of the largest variance, or all of our water and sewer tap fees so disproportionate to the other water and sewer providers around us, or is there kind of a variation across providers?
Yeah, and, and I have seen a lot of that data, I can't speak with authority specifically, but I do know that the major water company, private water company that provides us, and the major public water district that serves a lot of the city are dramatically more than the city of Denver. City of Denver, I think, is at like $3,500 maybe for a water tap, maybe even a little less. Green Mountain would be example where I think it's more like $16,000. So very dramatic differences in those costs, and it is a huge impediment.
And I'll add, we're, we are in the process of doing some more research into what that cost is in each of our water districts across the city, and what water districts are doing now and are able to do or willing to do in the future for this. So we, we hope to be able to revisit this issue in the near future.
Fantastic, thank you. I just have one last question, at least for this round, which is, I wonder if you could speak at all, how like the, the size in particular compares to any, anywhere else in the metro, like, especially if it's not Denver, I think that would be super helpful.
Yeah, we did not specifically drill down on that. That is something that, that I'm sure data could be compiled. We were thinking of it in terms, as we, as we often do in making these recommendations, we're trying not to completely upset the apple cart, we're starting with a regulatory scheme, how do we adjust it so that it lessens the burdens but stays within the same scheme? Again, a good argument could be made for taking off any limitation on that, because there may very well be circumstances where someone wants to move in, you know, an extended family, and they have a lot of family members, and, and basically both units, the main house and the ADU should be comparable in size, or perhaps the new build should be bigger, and the, the person who owns it may want to be in the smaller single-family home. It's really about creating that sort of flexibility, but I, I'm afraid I don't have kind of a list of what the square footage limitations would be in other jurisdictions.
All right, we have next, Councilor LeBure, then Councilor Nystrom, then Councilor.
Hey Commissioner, thanks for being here. I just wanted to see if you could speak to the ownership piece that you already mentioned a little bit, because I think that's the, you know, biggest concerns I have are related to that, so if you could speak to that, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, and, and I assume, Councilor, you mean the requirement of being an owner occupied and at least one of the two, either the main house or the ADU?
Correct.
Boy, this, this was a tough one, and the reason it's a tough one is there's two different things that are happening. One is we certainly want to encourage homeownership in one of these two as a tool, that's kind of the notion of an ADU, but the current requirement is just really burdensome. The notion that someone would have to file a covenant, some deed restriction into perpetuity, we got the advice of council that there is no mechanism for even removing that, so it affects, in, in theory, the value of your property into perpetuity. We think this is one of the major barriers to why someone would not want to do an ADU. The current ordinance says you've got to go report a covenant that says an owner will always live in one of the two units. So if we want to, so you could have that, we think that's too burdensome. The next step down from that is, well, we can say in the ordinance that you have to still be an owner in one of the two units. And the problem we heard there was code enforcement. There isn't really a way to know on any particular day if the owner is the person you see coming in and out of the door. This is a classic nightmare for code enforcement. So we went looking for another way to have ownership be evaluated. And we're suggesting that the best way to do that is the point in time when a permit is pulled. Because when a permit is pulled to construct the ADU, proving ownership is easy, and it's discreet. So it's not the requirement, it's not the code enforcement requirement problem. And then, of course, you could decide that that's not a requirement you want to have at all. That maybe you don't need to have an owner in one of those units. But that's the policy decision before the council. And our suggested remedy is really to strike the balance between removing the super owner's barrier and allowing something that could be code enforced.
Commissioner, did you see that as a concern of who the owner could be, such as private company maybe buying up houses?
Yeah, you know, this is certainly something that we've heard, others are here, hear the concern about these, the outside investors. I must tell you, I have not yet seen data on that. I'd be curious to see data about the interest in foreign investors coming up and buying in a bunch of property. Our homes are very expensive. It's not, it's not the ideal investor environment. But again, if council wanted to, you could still require that there be an owner occupier of one of the two units, but you'll have to figure out how to regulate that. We know that the current requirement is too burdensome. And we're suggesting that a lesser one would be useful.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Nystrom.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I had the same question, same concerns. And I hear what you're saying about the price of homes, however, that doesn't seem to preclude investors. And it's not necessarily foreign investors, it's real estate investment companies. And my concern is that if we don't figure out a way to ensure that these homes aren't being purchased by investors, and then the rates become, you know, comparable to market rate rentals that we're already running into over and over again. And, you know, just basically pricing people out of the market that we're gonna end up, you know, just kind of reinforcing the state that we're in right now. So, not really a question, but I just wanted to follow up on that. I do think that needs some additional consideration.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sinks, then we all have Counselor Lo and Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. If we could refer to the document and the new number six and B, I wonder if you could flesh that out for me? I'm trying to picture B, where it says, "External alterations that would change the residential character of the property shall be prohibited." Could you give some examples of that? Either one of you, Director or Chair Kolkmeier?
Counselor, that's an existing provision in the current.
Yeah, so, so the ADU wouldn't is not involved in that, or?
Well, yeah, the idea here is someone taking an existing home and requesting an ADU be a part of it, the idea is that the end result still looks like a home. And so if they're proposing something that, you know, makes it look commercial or different, you know, the idea is to keep the single-family character of that franchise looking like a home. And I don't know that we've ever run across something that ran afoul of that provision, but it's one of those that you assume you'd know it when you see it.
Okay. And then C, I understand that it's in the code still, but let's say, for example, somebody lives in a brick home, they want to add another story as an ADU. And so C says, "It shall be similar in appearance." Sounds a little subjective, similar in appearance with same materials. And so they'd have to build up again with more brick? Or that's just a call that you'll make, whether the materials are similar enough? Or, talk to me about that?
Yeah, again, one, I don't think we've had to really interpret before, because generally, our ADUs are either internal or in a separate building. But in the example that you gave, if someone had a two-story brick building and wanted to add a third story, it would have to be compatible. So it would either have to be brick, or it would have to be something that looked appropriate as a third story to a brick building.
And Counselor, if I can add something? And I want to be very clear, this is not a statement by the Planning Commission, it is purely from myself. But I think a provision like this, which you find in almost every zoning ordinance, is kind of an older way of thinking. The notion of architecture has changed. And it used to be, you know, if you had a Tudor-style house and you were doing an addition, it better be a Tudor-style addition. And now, a lot of architects, I think, are saying that it's better to articulate differently the addition. That's an interesting and powerful architectural statement. So that language, we didn't suggest removing, because it is pretty standard in a lot of zoning codes, but personally, I think it doesn't give as much flexibility, and doesn't allow enough interesting architecture to be added to our city's landscape.
So, of course, we have the red line through this. Are there any other opportunities for more red line or more changes to be made? Yeah?
Yeah, this is entirely, Counselor says it's up to council. So, these are our recommendations, but they have no force, no effect. It would be entirely up to council to do nothing, pursue these, pursue these with additional changes or fewer changes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, before I hand it off to Counselor Lo, I'll add a little bit to that. What our task here tonight is going to be is to, for one, decide, do we want to move this forward to council to actually make changes to this ordinance? But separately, too, we do have the opportunity, if there are certain things that we would like to have changed in here as a part of that movement over to city council for a vote, we do have the opportunity to do that tonight as well. Of course, you guys have been through the process with ordinance updates on the dais, there can definitely be amendments made there. However, this is the time where we get to get a little bit more background research, and I feel like a little bit more thoughtful consideration as we're doing it early and not, you know, in the last, in the last conversation. So keep that in the back of your mind. A, we want to vote on whether or not we send this forward to council in general, and then B, if there are some tweaks in here that anybody would like to make, that can definitely be part of the conversation this evening, too. With that, we'll go to Counselor Lo, then Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Wright.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kolkmeier. You know, just taking one step back here and looking at the bigger picture, I mean, to me, and I think to council, I'd venture to say, you know, we really have, there's an important priority to make progress on making housing more affordable in Lakewood. It's clearly something we've heard over and over. And this is very consequential, and also some of the relatively lower hanging fruit, right? I mean, allowing homeowners in a sort of decentralized grassroots-driven way to put smaller ADUs on their property, there's good economic research that that pushes down home price, you know, that, not pushed down home prices, but makes for more affordable options for lower and middle-income folks that are looking to rent, that are looking to buy, that don't have as many options in a community. And this is a really strong strategy for increasing affordable housing. So I'm very strongly supportive of these proposals. I think the larger challenge is exactly what Mr. Kolkmeier identified, that because of the exorbitant tap and sewer fees for ADUs, it is so challenging to build ADUs. I think the big picture problem here is, we can pass all this, and it still won't increase the supply of ADUs, as much as frankly, I would ideally like to see in Lakewood over the next few years. But I think this is a really strong start, and a good consensus proposal that's come to us from Planning Commission. And I do think that we should move it forward and have a chance to vote on it as an ordinance. Mr. Parker, I was interested, it sounds like you and your department are doing some looking at the tap fees. Will there be some sort of, you know, summary of the research that you all find that might come before council that looks at tap fees specifically in Lakewood, and where they're particularly high, and which providers seem to be a part of the problem, just so that we can get our hands around that side of this a little bit more?
So, yeah, Public Works is actually taking the lead on reaching out to water and sewer districts. That said, we haven't had a lot of luck yet, getting a lot of information back, so we're gonna have to take another look at how to gather this information. So I don't yet know what information we'll be able to gather, or what format we'll take in bringing it back to you, but, you know, we are looking into this issue.
Great. Well, for my two cents, I would love to figure out a way to get our hands more around this problem and get some data on tap and sewer fees, as I think strongly suspect it'll back up with what Mr. Kolkmeier is saying, that it's, you know, making ADUs unaffordable for a lot of folks in Lakewood. Just one other point on the issue of the owner-occupant point. I mean, Mr. Kolkmeier, I'm just gonna ask you to kind of confirm that I've got the facts on this, right? I mean, under current laws, you alluded to, you have to enter into a covenant to do an ADU, which is a binding thing that travels with the house in perpetuity, right? I mean, for all kinds of good reasons, when a homeowner is considering doing this, I mean, adding a covenant that binds the house in perpetuity is kind of a scary thing to do, right? Because, I mean, you know, we all have every intention of being in Lakewood, but, you know, you might be in your home for 20, 30, 40 years, who can tell what sort of life circumstances might arise where you might not want to be the owner-occupier of that unit decades from now, right? Or when you go to sell the house, you know, that could be a barrier. So the covenant is a huge potential hurdle for someone who wants to pursue an ADU. And I guess I just want to call out that the language does, as you point out, require that a permit for an ADU be issued to an owner-occupant or their designee. So that ensures that someone has to be an owner-occupant, or they can designate, but you have to have an owner-occupant at the time of the ADU. And moreover, the short-term rental ordinance that council passed recently also explicitly provides that to do a short-term rental, and to have an active short-term rental license, you have to be, you know, you have to be occupying the house. Can you confirm that those two things are true, Mr. Kolkmeier?
Yes, they are. And very often, what we are looking at is setting the regulation at the appropriate level. So the city council determined that that was a reasonable requirement for STRs, or, yeah, STRs. But there's an easy way to enforce that, because you require people to get permits. It did not seem reasonable for us that if a homeowner wanted to build an ADU, that the city should have to, or make them, get a permit every year to prove that they're still an owner-occupied. That seemed unreasonable when you're talking about an ADU as opposed to a short-term rental. So we're suggesting slightly below.
I would agree, and I'll yield my time here, but I think that makes sense. I think my point is the combination of the current regulation we have in place for short-term rentals, which does require a sort of an annual confirmation that it's an occupant. Plus, the way that you've drafted this recommendation, that at the time of the ADU, there's got to be an owner-occupant, those two provisions together, I think, should give council quite a bit of assurance that overwhelmingly, ADUs are going to be, I mean, 100% going to be done by owner-occupants. And the only question is whether there's a very small percentage of them that then later somehow gets sold, right? But I would suggest, clearly the broader public policy problem is how to make ADUs more doable. And I don't know that we should worry about the vanishingly small number of cases where the ADU then gets transferred later to someone who's not an owner-occupant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Lo. Counselor Stewart, you're up.
Thank you. I'm still chewing on that as well. I've had quite a few conversations about that issue. I think everyone kind of knew this was gonna be potentially the sticking point, and I do definitely concede and appreciate that, for the most part, this is probably adequate, especially if someone is going to potentially build an ADU for a short-term rental. My concern, though, is, you know, and my hope, quite frankly, also, is that people will also use them for long-term rentals for people. And, you know, that folks will actually be able to live in those ADUs on the property. And so, back to the concern, I think just about corporate purchasing and landlord ownership, I'm just wondering, is, and I know deed restrictions are scary and maybe not the best solution, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to potentially enter into a deed restriction that requires a Colorado resident to be the purchaser in perpetuity, not necessarily an owner-occupant, but just a resident of the state? Again, I don't know if that is legal, just throwing out a couple of ideas that could potentially, I don't know, give those of us peace of mind that are concerned about the very lucrative possibility of having two rentals on a single property and not having an owner-occupier. I think that is definitely a concern that I do have. Overall, I'm extraordinarily supportive of all of the changes to this ordinance, since I was the one who asked for them also, so I'm very delighted. That's the only one that I have concerns about. And then my second question, we can just talk about them both together, is just a clarification, I know we were talking about the maximum size of the ADU, but also, they are subject to the requirements of lot sizes, of setback requirements, of height requirements. And so every individual property is also going to have its own maximum size of an ADU, based on the setback from the main structure and the setbacks from the lot lines. And I know, in talking to some planning commissioners, that was also, it's just kind of, that's going to provide a lot of naturally occurring size limits that could very well be much, much less than 1,400 square feet, depending on the size of the lot and the size of the home on the lot. So I guess you don't have to answer that question, that was just an observation. But super curious about compromises, or like, anything that could guarantee, or at least prevent too many outside corporations from gobbling up these properties when they go on the market?
I would just say, Counselor, that we did not look at the legality of restricting purchasers in the future, that was not something that we took a look at, so I cannot speak to whether you can do that, or whether you could separate out only Colorado residents versus non-Colorado residents, so unfortunately, I can't speak to that. Certainly, it is an issue for the city about how you want to handle code enforcement. And this is a code enforcement issue. If the goal is to ensure that short-term rentals get regulated on an ongoing basis, then you make them go through a permit process. You could do the same thing for ADUs, but I think that our consensus was that that was a step higher than might be appropriate for a typical ADU circumstance, to require owners on an ongoing basis to prove that it's still owner-occupied. But I would defer to your code enforcement people about the best way to do that. What we were told was, we know it's easy for us to make sure it's the owner at the permit process, and that's why we gravitate it that way. We know it's easy for us to make sure it's the owner at the permit process. And that's why we gravitate it that way.
Okay, thanks.
I thank you very much for all this, all the work that you guys have put into this. This is extremely helpful. To at least tee up this discussion. My main concern is along the lines of what's already been been echoed. And where I'm coming from on this is that I could. Apply for a permit and get that permit and then the very next day no longer be the owner of that. And so all these issues that we're bringing up there, that I think. Having just the requirement that you be the owner at the time that you apply really doesn't provide those. Those safeguards that we may have. And as you've said, maybe we're talking about uh an issue that. Is it will not become a problem. I do note that there are a number of cities around the country that do have requirements. And then there's some states that have said, we don't want that requirement. I didn't know, you you mentioned that you hadn't, your your team hadn't, or the planning commission had not had a chance to really dig into individual. Requirements in in each of the Colorado's. Cities. I wonder if our staff, Mr. Rob, do you have any information on that, what other cities in Colorado? Require in terms of owner occupancy?
Hi, Counselor. No, we could certainly look.
I I said, Mr. Rob, I meant, Mr. Parker, I apologize.
I'm trying to be helpful.
Yeah, no, sorry.
I thought you meant me, but I didn't want to stop.
No, no, I'll drink some caffeine later. I'm gonna hit myself in the back of the head.
Wait, I want to hear Mr. Rob's answer.
We could certainly look into that for you.
And and we have a little bit of that. I don't have it right here. We we have looked into a few jurisdictions and we can look into more and maybe. Consolidate that information for council. Uh, I. To the best of my memory, it's a mixed bag. There there are all sorts of different regulations in different communities.
So just while I have the correct person for a change. Then the follow up on that is. How onerous would it actually be if we had something along the lines of what we have for short term rentals? Where once a year, someone has to file a document with the city saying, I still live, you know, this is still my principal residence. Once a year.
So that the reason that that's not. That's more onerous in this case than it would be for short term rentals is that. Short term rentals are something that someone's doing for profit. They're making money. And this could be that. But our hope, I think all of our hope is that a lot of this is gonna be people putting family members in there or other things. And so it's a, it's a. Regulation that is not onerous for a for profit situation, but is more onerous for a homeowner. Who wants to put their mother in law in that.
Yeah, and but we could make that fairly simple, right? We could have an online form where someone pays ten bucks or fifteen bucks. Or maybe it's, maybe it's zero, but they sign, they send in a form once a year, checking a box affirming or. Swearing that they are, this is their principal residence and we move on from there. I mean, is that something that we would be able to do from an infrastructure and city point of view?
It's, it's possible. So, yeah, with. You know, with a few dozen of these in the city, that's not a big issue on city infrastructure. If we're successful in getting a few hundred of these in the city. It becomes an issue where we'll, we'll have to. You know, designate more staff resources than we currently have to keep in track of that. So it just depends on how successful you are in getting more of these.
But at the twenty four that we're at right now and, you know, if we double that up, that would be a big success, I would think, but. That would be an okay thing from a staff point of view.
Right. If if we fail, it's not a problem from a staff point of view. If we succeed, it might be.
Okay. And then the the last question I have, and this is goes back to Mr. Kolkmeier. Did the planning commission look at the parking from a perspective of? So we have going from one bedroom to potentially two bedrooms. Did they consider, well, if we go to two bedrooms, maybe we want to have. Designated parking and not just all on the street parking, even if it's available. Is that something that you guys discussed?
Yeah, it is. And one of the most interesting things that came out of the review for ADUs. Is the shrinking household size of our existing single family housing stock. Most of our housing stock was built several decades ago at a time when the average household was three point three people. Now. It's two point two people. So thirty percent of the people and the teenagers' cars and things like that. Aren't actually in these same neighborhoods. So our thought was that even with more than one bedroom. And again, um, these are what we refer to as gentle density, because there's likely to be one on one block. And then, you know, you gotta go another mile to find another one. Is that it would be very unlikely for the addition of these ADUs to create any sort of serious. On street parking problems because they would be so dispersed. And they are already less than the usage these same houses and same streets had a number of decades ago. Even saying that, though, we did put in. That in any circumstance where it was not legally or practically available, then you would still have to provide that off street parking. And we spelled out those conditions that if those are applicable, then you'd still have to provide. Off site or off street parking.
Thank you very much. I I know I've gone to my five minutes, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilor Rain. Councilor Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the discussion so far and really appreciate the planning commission's work on this important topic. I remember actually um when this was suggested last year and I was on the doors, I just like very so happened to be. To talk with um a constituent that like literally the next week who had tried to. Had considered bu- building an ADU to move her aging parents onto her property. And cited the covenant um and cited the uh. Tap fees as the biggest reasons that she didn't do that. And so just do want to emphasize that like. This covenant of or this requirement that you're signing into perpetuity about who you're gonna sell your home to, who's gonna live in it, all these kinds of things like. Are really significant barriers for people in the community to think about. Like her, moving her parents and right to her how, to her property. So with that piece, yeah, I I I want to say like I'm super supportive of um the. This list of um. Changes being proposed. I think that they'll be helpful, although I think we all recognize, right, that this tap fees conversation is. Really one of the big barriers to how many like really increasing this kind of gentle density into our communities. I would definitely love to see whether it's across Colorado or across. The nation like a comparison of how folks deal with this owner occupancy question. I definitely understand and share folks. Thoughts about how we can try and. Keep land in our community, keep ownership in our community. And I also am just really nervous about unintended consequences of putting some of these. Restrictions um in, right? Like, like you were talking about with the potential code enforcement nightmare, right? Like. Already had some conversations with people who assume who are and are not owners on properties that I don't. Think that that's like an appropriate place to be, to to have this kind of conversation about. Anyway, I think you get the gist of what I'm saying there. Also, like, I'm thinking even, I'm trying to think about this is like through the lens of this constituent that I was talking to, like. What if she one day like wanted to, like, had her, I don't know, had a kid live in that house? And then, and then she moved somewhere else and then they had their friends in the ADU. Like, that also is a community use, right? But it's not exactly owner occupied. And so I I think it's important for us to think, obviously, about. These unintended consequences with corporate investment and um, you know, some of these, these really. Big themes that go beyond just this conversation of ADUs, right? But also um just about like how um we can make things um easier for folks to create kind of like, I don't know. Easier living arrangements for their families or people in their communities. And so I would really love to see. Kind of a comparison of these so that we can hit that right balance between um discouraging some of this. You know, speculation and other types of things that we're seeing in our community while also not um. Doing kind of what happened maybe when this, these regulations were put in place, right? Which is stopping things from from being built. Um, so I just wanted to kind of. Express some of the like thoughts going through my head on like some of the challenges of how we can, we can have. This conversation. Um, but I I do just want to emphasize that this idea of an owner occupant being the only. Kind of person who can build this as as a very significant deterrent um as Counselor Low was mentioning. So. No specific questions, um but just wanted to um put that out there um and. Join in the relative consensus of excitement about um this uh regu- these regulation changes.
Thank you, Councilor Cruz. Mayor Protem Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kolkmeier. This is great information and appreciate the responsiveness of the planning commission to these requests that come from council. Um, and I would agree with your characterization. Of these being modest. There is an opportunity for us, I think, to go a little bit further. And I think. We're sort of hearing an appetite for that tonight, so I'm looking forward to this conversation continuing with council. I have a question that I don't think we can answer, but you know, there is a co- this um piece around. Owner occupancy and I guess. I'm having a tough time and I would agree with Councilor Low of, it it sort of feels like we're solving for shadows and I guess. I've never had an experience where I've heard from community members, constituents, that we have too many outside investors who are buying up properties. And using them as rentals. And so I'm wondering if staff has access to that information. I was looking at the housing plan. Do we know, like, is there a tremendous amount of vacant homes have been purchased by outside investors that are then being used as rentals?
No, we're, we have one situation where property was. Built uh as rental homes, um but we have not seen much. Purchase of rental home or purchase of homes by corporations for rental. We have heard of it happening in other parts of the country, maybe stronger housing markets. But it it really hasn't been an issue here. And in terms of. An investor buying a house to add an ADU for profit, the 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 profit margin just really isn't there. Investor money goes to larger projects, more units, that sort of thing in in Lakewood and in in the front range. So it it, I don't see that as a, as a real. Concern of of people coming in and scooping up a lot of single family homes in the current market.
Sure. And that's sort of what I'm driving to is just, I think that that is sure a possibility, but not probably the biggest thing that we would be faced with. And I, if we're talking about short term rentals, you know, purchasing these and creating short term rentals, we've already regulated that. So I want to just caution us from like. Crossing the streams here. We we're here with the sole purpose of identifying how to advance uh less restrictions on ADUs. And if we're trying to solve for STR, please don't even remind me of those conversations for those who are there. So this has already been. You know, something that we've considered with outside investments in that. And so I just want to make sure that we're keeping focused on that. And ultimately, if someone purchases it and they put an ADU there and then they become both rental units, is that not what we're trying to do? So. You know, I would just hope that and uh looking forward to us continuing the conversation on the dais. It sounds like we do have consensus in moving this forward. And I think uh there's an opportunity for us maybe to go a little bit further in this. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will start round two. Counselor Over, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor. I I'm gonna go to the the core of this, uh, Mr. Parker. Why are we doing this? Uh, I I've been writing down a list of questions. Do we want, okay, and maybe we'll just do one at a time. But are we looking for more mother in law apartments?
Counselor, yeah, uh, this, this was a request from council. It's, it's.
Right, right, but but. What's our goal? I'm sorry. What's our goal here?
I I think that's a goal.
More ADUs, but.
I I'd be happy to take that.
Well, that's the start. I mean. Yes, okay, let's do it then. Let's, let's go that way.
So obviously, I can only speak for myself and those around me, but I will say that. Um, I do, there, there is a number of options here. I mean, you've got aging older adults that are around us. And um, you know, I personally, I know that there are families. We are of the, you know, as the generation extras, the 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 sandwich generation, right? Where we're taking kids. Taking care of kids and we're taking care of aging parents as well. And being able to have a place where potential parents could move in where they're not three states away as someone is trying to care for them. Is important, but moving someone into the Denver area can be very cost prohibitive. The other side of that is I do. As you all know, have a high schooler in my house and the conversations that occur in high school is that they will never be able to afford to live in the community that we are in. So as a mother, I see this also as an opportunity to provide some kind of affordable type of housing. To um our children as they are going out and prospering and starting lives in the new world too. So. There's a number of things. I know we've had other examples that have come up, but I will say, you know, personally, those are the two that most. Touch my heart as we were having these conversations last year. Does that answer your question, Counselor Over?
Oh, it's just the start, but yes, in a way. So parents, kids, mothers in laws, family. And and I feel bad for you if your kids live in. In an ADU nearby and they're thirty years old. That's gonna be, oh my goodness. Uh, okay, so the next thing is, uh, do we want more short term? Are we looking for more short term rental? Because that's what we're gonna get. I mean, people are going to, if we loosen things up, people are going to. See this as an opportunity to build another whatever. Run out their top floor or something like that. Uh, and so. You know, we are going to get more short term rentals. Is that's what, is that one of our goals?
Counselor Stewart, would you like to answer that question since you were the one that originally sent this to planning commission? Your perspective might be good here.
Sure. I think. Mayor Strom did a really nice job of talking about some of the reasons we're trying to. Support and spur on homeowners in our community taking advantage of this option. Another one um from a different perspective is from a homeowner like myself who. Um, and other young people who are really, really struggling to be able to afford to purchase a first home. Or to be able to purchase a single family home. I can't afford a single family home in Lakewood right now. And so, and also folks who want to retire and age in place in our communities and don't necessarily need to downsize. But the cost of the, our property taxes are going up and folks are on fixed incomes. And I know that there are. You know, folks who could really benefit from the supplemental income of having a rental property on their property to be able to afford their mortgage. So that's another reason. Um, there are so many and ADUs typically are pretty. You know, eh, with the exception of the fact that the price of an ADU is so significantly higher in Lakewood because of our tap fees. For the most part, ADUs are pretty naturally. Occurring affordable housing stock because. You know, very often it is an owner who lives in the other unit and are either. Supplementing their, you know, trying to afford their own mortgage or. You know, having a a family member move in on a fixed income or is on a fixed income themselves and. You know, they're not as profit driven as a lot of other rental investments and rental properties. And of course. Some people are going to be able to. You know, turn them into a short term rental to be able to afford their mortgage.
But we want short term rentals. Is that something we want or is it, is it a goal or is it a goal to not? Have these ADUs go heavily into short term rentals?
I don't think there was a thought as to um the specific use of these ADUs. There are lots of different uses and again. People have the ability to choose how they wanna, you know, use their property within our rules.
But we could be people that, that we can say, this is our goal, not, we could, we can say our goal is. Yes, we would like more short term rentals, but you touched on it a second ago because my next one was. Do we want more investment opportunities for homeowners? That's actually part, part of that question. So. And you said, definitely said yes on that. The next question is, uh, do we want more and do we want investors to buy, build more rental hu- rental houses? That's, I mean, and my point on all these questions is. That's, I mean, and my point on all these questions is, if we don't want it, we should be putting in guardrails so that it doesn't happen. Um, like, um, we were talking at the beginning, we're opening everything up. Everything is very restricted now, but I want to make sure we don't open it up too far. And so I'm trying to identify what we don't want to happen here. Uh, and in other words, and it sounded like to me that everybody was saying, we really don't want investors coming in, buying, buying a house, building an A D U and renting them both out either short term or long term. Um, but we do want things for the mother-in-law apartments, or for the parents, or the kids, or the retirees. Um, and we do want more, well, more affordable housing for those people. So as we're talking about this, or as we're looking at it, I think we have to keep in mind what our goals are going to be and what our goals are not. Um, and that's what I'm going to say. Uh, that'll be just about it. So for me, definitely, I don't want, you know, I don't want investors buying the houses to build something. Uh, I would, I went through, as we've talked, that our veterans have mentioned with the uh, short term rentals, oh my god, that that discussion went on for years, and primary residence was a major part of it, and if not the biggest part of it. Uh, and we decided that we did want for short term rentals to be primary residents. And I personally think that we should stick to that. If we're going to have A D Us, then it should be a primary residence or owner occupied, one of them. Um, and I I do think fourteen hundred square feet is going to be too big. Uh, well, I looked it up on Zillow while we were talking, and my house is actually fifteen hundred. It really is fifteen hundred. And so that makes me, made me think, uh, and I would ask, uh, Mr. Parker again. Ha, ha, ha. Um, you're you're familiar with the the twenty-nine small houses on um, on ex- west exposition in Wardmore. There, they built, they had a lot, they built twenty-nine small house, small houses. Um, and they're all rentals, and it's an investor. And I was, that went by there last night, and they're not small houses. They're they're probably three thousand square feet. Or let's, let's drop it down to twenty-eight hundred square feet. And so with the proposals being put forward right now, could those investors have built those twenty-nine houses and called the top floor an A D U? And be renting out both of them?
So we talk, you've talked a lot about short term rentals and uh, this A D U, and and I think it's important to note it, know how they'd work together. So you did note that your uh, short term rental regulations require primary resident occupancy. So there is no situation where an investor or anyone else could add an A D U on a home and short term rental, one or both, if they don't live there. So the only way one of those units could be a short term rental is if the the owner lives on site.
Right, right now, unless that got changed with a different council coming in or something like that.
Fair enough, fair enough, but but under, under the existing short term rental rules, none of those houses, even if they're two units, a a ma- main and an A D U, could have any short term rentals in them.
Right, but I wasn't really talking about short term rentals in that situation. I was talking about long term.
Yes, so in that case, yeah, they could have two long term and more affordable units rather than one larger, more expensive unit.
There you go. That actually would work. That would help. Of course, it would be bad for parking, depending on what kind of parking they have. But that's, so that's another thing we have to keep out on before, but I'm using up too much time, so I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that unless you had something else. Well, me neither. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Over, councillor Low.
Thank you. I I know I'm on my second round here. We've got a whole other item to get on to. Um, just two points. One, I mean, on on councillor O- Over's perfectly fair question, what problem are we trying to solve here? I think there's a number of answers to that, but I mean, I I think a deeply compelling one is we have all heard from teachers and nurses and first responders and seniors and graduate students who would like to live in Lakewood but can't. And A D Us and it, any policy that that manages to slightly pry open the tiny, tiny, tiny crack that is, that is A D Us in Lakewood right now, is gonna create more options for for smaller dwellings um, in our community, in a residential, you know, not, not big, huge apartment buildings, but you know, one-off granny flats, small dwellings in in a residential community that are more affordable. Um, there's one study that A D Us add thirty-five percent to homes value, right? So a a second good answer is a homeowner might want to improve their um, uh, their residence. Uh, and I think both of those are are eminently reasonable answers to to that question, and and I think, you know, look, folks, if if we talked a lot about affordable housing. I mean, if we're serious about affordable housing, this, I I really do see this as the absolute bare minimum that we can do. It clearly, I think that there is a a desire to move this forward. I think our 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 goal here should be, you know, Mr. Kolkmeier said that we have twenty-five, whatever he said, out of twenty-five thousand plus um, uh, uh, primary residences, um, single, single family homes, we've got twenty-five A D Us, right? And I think we're all on board with the fact that the huge barrier here remains tap fees. So it's not like any of these changes are gonna suddenly cause a flood of A D Us to to sweep across Lakewood, right? We're talking about marginal change here at best. Um, so o- on this, on this question of um, what what might happen if if a couple of out-of-state, you know, actors buy buy residences, I I I hear it, I totally understand, I mean, I I hear the concern. Um, I don't think it's an unreasonable concern. But I do, I would second what uh, what the mayor Protem said. I would sec- second what Mr. Parker has said here, right? I I I think we might be getting a little distracted by by kind of shadow boxing at a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, let's let's, let's apply some common sense here. Uh, do we really think that there are a bunch of out-of-state companies that the second we pass this ordinance, it to the extent that a couple more, you know, that that a hundred or two hundred A D Us, or maybe three hundred A D Us get added, are gonna rush in and start buying up homes and start renting them out? I I just, I I, for the reasons that Mr. Parker articulated, I I I just don't think that that's the number one concern here. Um, if it is a real concern, if it's feasible, um, perhaps we could look at some sort of um, solution to kind of, if if if, in the rare case that it does happen, make sure that we record that somewhere, right, so that we, or or track it, so that if if we see suddenly that that A D Us are getting bought up, we can, we can look at that. But right now, it just doesn't strike me as as um, as the central issue at hand here. Um, and and I do uh, uh, really emphatically agree with what councillor Cruz said. The 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 current deed restriction, I think, is probably a significant barrier, right? I mean, I think for folks that are looking at the A D U, primarily the tap fee, but the fact that you've got this permanent deed restriction on the house, if you do this is a meaningful barrier. And I think if our goal is to reduce barriers to allow more A D Us, so that we have more affordable housing in residential areas in our community, this is low hanging fruit that the planning commission has almost, you know, uni- um, almost unanimously endorsed. So I I I think this is, um, I hear the concern. I don't think it's unfounded, but I think weighing the sort of the the situation and where we are, we should move forward, see if there's a way that we can track, you know, if if there are any cases where this does happen. But I I don't think the sort of hypothetical concern about out-of-state companies buying up A D Us i- is worth adding additional barriers or keeping in place barriers to A D Us. That that's my two cents on this.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a quick check, and I recognize we do still have two hands up, but it is sounding um, very much like we've got a consensus. We'll do a formal vote on that, but um, I would also put forth, we, it's sounding like we will probably be um, desiring to send this forward to council with the caveat of what are different residency, potential residency requirements the other jurisdictions are doing that we might entertain as being part of that ordinance? So I'm gonna put that out there. Councillor Labour, and then councillor Ryan, if you still have something you wanted to add to the conversation, um, I'll go ahead and hand it off to councillor Labour.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say that, uh, you know, if if people have things that are stuck on, you weren't, you know, we're not gonna convince them one way or the other. I just think, let's have the motion ready. If we're hearing some things, I'm, I'm hearing that there's some interest in in having property owners be owner occupied. Um, you know, for A D Us, I just think we should have a motion prepared for that, so we're not drafting language on the dais. And that, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Councillor Ryan. You're on mute councillor Ryan.
I just want to make real clear, I'm, I am in favor of removing the deed restriction. What I'm not in favor of is removing a requirement of owner occupancy. So you can look at cities like Boston, San Antonio, a number of wha- what we might consider progressive cities have also fit, who who also have very real housing issues, have sought fit to say, now, you do need to have an owner to uh, to occupy either the primary or the accessory dwelling unit. And to get to shadow boxing, you know, we really don't have information that would say that um, having the owner occupancy is really a real barrier to uh, more people having A D Us. What I'm hearing from the planning commission is that the number one thing that on this topic that they're concerned about is the deed restriction. So let's go ahead and remove the deed restriction, leave the owner occupancy piece in place, and then see for it. We can all, we're probably gonna be making changes as we move forward, but that's as far as I'm prepared to go right now. I still need to know a little bit more on the parking, so uh, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay, thank you councillor Ryan. And the way that this is structured, I'll say, you know, primarily for newer councillors that haven't been through this process or much before, is the beauty of going through, and we start this conversation in a study session, or actually, it started months ago when councillor Stewart asked to send it to the planning commission. But then we come back, we hear the data, we hear the information that that, you know, lots of different questions that are around this. This also, now, if we were to pass the idea of this this evening, then it goes to staff. Staff starts to work through the details, and this gives us lots of time to be able to voice it out to our community through, you know, our ward meetings, um, through other outreach that we have of people, stakeholders that we know are interested in this topic. And so this is where I would also encourage everybody to reach out to those that you know are interested and voice it out in all of the community meetings that you're doing in the month, the weeks and months to come, so that you can start to really get a good impression of what it is that our broader community is interested in us adopting. So with that, um, why don't I go ahead and will propose a vote that we are moving forward with sending this to council. Um, with the caveat that we will be including a request for some research that gives us some idea of different potential ownership restriction options. Does that sound good? I see Ms. Hodgson nodding. Councillor Cruz.
Yeah, I just wanted to add briefly, if, just to specify, it doesn't have to change the motion, but not only like what are the requirements, but how are they enforced? Because I I really do want us to make sure that whatever information we get is not only this is happening in X city and this is happening in Y city, but like, how well that's actually going? Because I think that that was the concern we heard from the planning commissioner tonight.
That sounds like a great addition. Thank you. Okay, so formal vote, I know we had some hands up, but fingers, arrows. Councillor Over, was that a yes? Okay, thank you. All right, we have yeses. It looks like a cross upload. Okay, all right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you commissioner Kolkmeier. And for the entire planning commission, for all the work, and director Parker, thank you so much for being here in the work and um, going through all these questions with us this evening. Really appreciate your efforts and your time. Oh, wait, and then we introduce topic number two. And for that, I will hand over the floor to director Parker again.
You're, you're not done with us yet. So the second request was to look into um, recommendations to improve the provision of, or increase the provision of affordable housing in the city of Lakewood. Uh, planning commission also spent many meetings and much time discussing this issue, and I will turn it over to chairman Kol- Kolkmeier again to present their recommendations.
Thank you, director and 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 mayor and members of the council. Um, so this one's a little broader than the A D U. The A D U one, it was a a pretty discreet project where we could literally look at the code and make very specific recommendations. This is more general, and this is targeted specifically to affordable ownership opportunities. How do we increase affordable ownership opportunities? Um, and I would say that the first tool is what we just talked about. Um, I think that the planning commission would say that to the extent having an A D U with rental income certainly might make it possible for some families to buy a home in Lakewood that they would not have otherwise. But the uh, major recommendation uh, that you see in this second set, the top two, A and B are the most significant. And um, though all seven of these are recommended, we think from the planning commission that the first two, um, while not specifically drilled down here in terms of an ordinance, are things that could be actionable in the near term. The number one is, we believe that the city of Lakewood should pursue establishing some type of inclusionary zoning program. We make reference to Denver and Boulder, and I will talk about those, but to a great extent, um, uh, the planning commission defers to professional staff uh, to to make more precise recommendations. We're really presenting to you what we think, based upon the input we got, is the concept. And the concept is that there should be a liquid inclusionary zoning program. Now, that term is kind of a catchall. Some people say that it only applies if you require development to have a certain percentage of affordable units. Others would say you can have an inclusionary program that is just strongly incentivizing, that's gonna get you um, more uh, uh, below market rate housing. But the problem with it always is the numbers, and this is where the detail comes in. What percentage of a development has to be affordable ownership? What does affordability mean? Is it a percent of the area mean uh, median income? I'll point out that that planning commission may reference to our current ordinance that talks about um, affordability, and that's from July of twenty twenty-two, um, where council said that for rental, it's eighty percent of area median income, and for ownership, it would be a hundred percent of area median income. Um, just, just a reminder, our household area median income right now in Lakewood is around eighty-three thousand dollars, which means for ownership, you're looking at a house in the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range, and yet our median house price is closer to five forty. So this is not without its economic struggles. Let me talk briefly about Denver. Uh, in a nutshell, um, Denver's program says that all residential development of ten units or more, and that's whether it's rental or sale, ten units or more, you have to include a certain percentage of below-market units, and they peg it to between eight and twelve percent, and there are reasons that you're closer to one or the other. It's a very robust and complicated ordinance. Um, in higher-cost areas, they require that the development of ten units or more be closer to ten, between ten and fifteen percent. Now, this program, like a lot of the programs, allows options. The developer can build them on-site, the developer can pay a fee in lieu that goes into a pot that then the city can use to actually build affordable uh, housing themselves, or subsidize affordable housing. Um, or you can negotiate some alternatives, like building the affordable units in another location, or dedicating land, things like that. Denver also requires what they call a linkage fee, which is for nine units or less, you pay a fee that then goes to support affordable housing, and that's based upon a calculation of the gross uh, floor area. Just to give you a a a sense, I just checked, and Denver is saying that in twenty twenty-four, they anticipate spending ninety-one million dollars um, that they've collected through the fee and loot program. So that gives you a little bit of the sense of of the scale. Boulder is a more aggressive program. It requires that all new residential development have at least twenty-five percent It requires that all new residential development have at least 25% of all units as permanently affordable housing, again, rental or sale. They also allow the ability to do it on-site or off-site, dedicate land, or make a cash payment in lieu. Just a little bit of more detail, and I know we're talking about ownership here, but in the rental category, Denver says that of the 25% of the development that has to be affordable, 80% of it has to be available at 60% of area median income, and 20% available at 50% of area median income. For sale, it's 100 to 120% of AMI. These for-sale under their program are all permanently deed restricted. And then they have some pretty complicated formulas on how they adjust rents over time, and what you're allowed to resell it at. So conceptually, the Planning Commission feels this is a tool that we hope City Council and professional staff dives into and tries to establish a program along the lines of what some of our neighboring communities have done in order to require or strongly incentivize the inclusion of affordable units. But ultimately, your tough decisions will be what percentage should be affordable of an overall development, and what does affordability mean? Does it mean 100% of AMI, 80% of AMI, 70, 60, 50? And there are obviously a lot of choices that need to be made there. So that's recommendation number one. That is really focused on developers, right? The developer comes in and says, I want to build an apartment building, and says, I want to build 25, you know, a subdivision with 25 homes. Our second recommendation is the opposite of that, which is who is the small lot owner? Where are the opportunities to build small homes, truly starter homes? As everybody knows, the two primary inputs to housing costs are land and building. There are other costs, but those are the big ones. So this recommendation is to lower or eliminate the minimum lot size requirement for us in order to increase the affordability of land. If you allow a smaller lot, the lot is going to be less expensive, the economics get better. Under our current ordinance, we map different residential areas. We have areas that are mapped at R143. That means only a single-family home can be built, and you have to have an acre of land. We have R118, where only a single-family home can be built, but you have to have half an acre. We have R112, that's a third of an acre, still just a single-family home. We have R19, and then the largest category is R16, which is 6,000 square feet. We are suggesting that council should consider allowing single-family homes to be built on less than 6,000 square feet. There is, we believe, a need for smaller homes in the 1,000 to 1,200 square foot that could appropriately be placed on a 2,500 to 3,000 square foot lot and could be sold at dramatically less. But just to emphasize, we are not talking about townhouses. We're not talking about duplexes. We are talking about single-family homes with sideyards, with front yards, with backyards, with height limitations. So this is truly an affordable entry house for people in our market. The Planning Commission did not really hear objections about this, but I will say that the one objection that we did hear was kind of more the notion, which is we're a suburb, and as a suburb, we like our big lots. I think it was very important in our discussion to point out that there is no proposal that compels anyone to sell their large lots. There's no proposal to compel anyone to subdivide their lot. What we're really talking about is a property owner controlling what their neighbor does and restricting their ability to potentially build a house on a smaller lot. And the consequence of having minimum lot requirements is an obvious one. It costs more to buy. So if what we're interested in is a diverse economic group of residents, then we're going to have to find a way to offer houses or to make a possible houses to be sold that are more economical. And the large lot, large house is not an economic barrier. So we are suggesting that we flip this script and say that we're going to empower the smaller lots to build so that families of lesser means also have an opportunity. The remainder of the recommendations in this set, C through G, are also strategies that we think definitely should be employed, but we would note that these are really strategies that we suggest be a part and integrated into the comprehensive plan process that we are in right now. These are the types of things that take more time. They require us to actually look at the map, look at what's on the map, try to figure out where the vacant land, try to figure out where the utilized land is, and those types of things. So especially as you look at recommendations C, D, and E, those all relate to smaller lot size, but they are things that we think are going to take more time. F is one I will note that, we had one commissioner who felt very strongly about this one. We do have in mixed-use residential districts, these are currently zoned for multifamily. But it's possible that someone may want to build a single-family home on that lot, and they're currently prohibited from doing so. We're not really sure the economics are going to be there for someone to build a single-family home in those districts, but it was a recommendation that we allow that to the extent someone would like to do that in that district. So it would not be downzoning of the district, but it would allow a single-family home. And we think that's consistent with the overall proposals related to ownership. And the last one has to do with trying to preserve housing stock. There's this notion of naturally occurring affordable housing. It's a little bit of a misnomer, because naturally occurring means it's below-market, but not subsidized. So the reason it's below-market is generally either condition or location. It's not as good a location, it's not in as good a condition, and that's why it's below-market. So programs designed to help people renovate, update, maintain that existing housing stock is also a recommendation of ours in terms of trying to preserve single-family homes that people may be interested in buying. So I'll just conclude by saying, and then happy to take your questions, that the two items that we believe should be, proceed at all deliberate speed are the investigation, creation, and implementation of an inclusionary zoning program. And secondly, that we should move as quickly as possible to allow smaller lots than the 6,000 floor that we currently have to create opportunities for more starter homes. And I would be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kolkmeier. So before we open the floor for questions, I will mention, Council, you may remember in February, we passed the Strategic Housing Plan, and with that, the next step is for us to go to a workshop where we start to pull out and identify what it is that we want to work on, you know, sooner than later, maybe never, maybe later, that kind of thing. And this is more information that can help inform that conversation. So just be mindful of that. We don't actually have any specific decisions. We do not have to land the plane on this puppy tonight. So this is all informational only, and with that, I will go ahead and hand it off to Counselor Matt Guerrero, who actually is also the Chair of our Housing Policy Commission.
Absolutely. I just want to, first of all, say that overall, these recommendations are so helpful. I think that the affordable ownership is a space where we hear a lot from residents, or I hear a lot from residents, don't forget that part when you're talking about affordable housing. It does, for very good reason, is very dominated by rentals, but having pathways to ownership as first-time homebuyers, having pathways to keep ownership in Lakewood of individuals, to expand homeownership in Lakewood is, of course, an incredibly important part, not just to our housing market, but to our market overall. It keeps wealth, like local wealth building possible. A middle class of America was originally built on this idea, right, of homeownership and property ownership that you live in. So just really excited at the timing of this conversation. Just to like give a little bit of an orientation too for folks, the Housing Policy Commission is having a discussion about what we each think, and then we'll try to come to some level of consensus, should be sort of the fastest-moving things coming out of the Strategic Housing Plan in this month's meeting, so that's like ahead of the full council workshop. So we'll come with sort of a list that we have thoughts on. We'll have a little bit of recommendation and deeper discussion coming into that as well. I just want to, I want to say particularly on inclusionary zoning, it made a lot of sense to me that the conversation had to include rentals as well, but this idea that both those housing markets and supplies are really, can have the potential to be benefited from that. And I think it was one thing too that we saw in the Strategic Housing Plan where it essentially says like, oh, that's, don't even look at it, it can't really be done. And I think that that was one thing that both the previous council and the current council overall really disagreed with that as a premise, recognizing that there's all these different ways to do it. So something that I would love to see, and perhaps the next steps don't really happen until after the workshop, but I would love to see a deeper research and then like proper policy recommendation on inclusionary zoning in particular, that is inclusive of homeownership and rentals, and how, and then, you know, if we discover that those need to just be two very different questions, zoning questions, programs, incentives, whatever, that's fine. But I have a, I have a crunch, and it sounds like you and the Planning Commission do too, that it works best if it's sort of approached holistically. But in that, I did have a question. You mentioned Denver's program, and it's collected a lot of money from the Fee and Lue, and I think because of our open space, our green space Fee and Lue, just that phrase can be touchy for us all, even though obviously they're totally different questions. So my question is, has Denver been able to spend any of the money that they've collected with their Fee and Lue?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. I can't speak to them. I don't know if the Director can. I only was checking what they're current, I mean, they have a mass amount. Anecdotally, though I'm sure we could determine what the exact amount is, but anecdotally, we've heard that the vast majority of developers choose to pay rather than do it on-site, and that raises a number of policy issues for all of you as to whether or not that's the best approach or not. I do think that it seems like the consensus around these programs are that collecting significant revenues and targeting them towards constructing affordable is an efficient method. And, you know, Denver, whose program is only a few years old, has a significant amount of money to spend. And, but I understand the sensitivity on that term without question.
Thank you so much. And then I'll move on for this, from this one, with just one additional question about, like, letter B recommendation and the G recommendation. Thinking about the houses that already exist, I know that this is something that comes up in Iberan Two Creeks a lot, which are neighborhoods that I serve, where we have large lot sizes, but smaller older homes, many of which have been very well cared for due to having a single-family resident owner, right, for a long time. And so the idea of sort of subdividing lots to smaller lots, but then also trying to keep these places where there's the individual homes on a larger lot, I can just see the world, the world where the details of those policies, like, actually fall at each other. So wondering if you all thought about that or discussed it, if you have any input or advice on that? Because the, in particular, there's actually a couple of specific projects currently underway in Ward 2, where what has happened is an individual home gets bought and scraped. Like, when we were talking earlier about the ADUs, like, the investors are going to come by them. Like, they're not going to come by them for a single additional unit. We see it already, and what investors come to buy is a large lot with a single home. Sometimes a single home would be very hard to repair and to keep. And, you know, if you're not really in that, you don't know that. Sometimes they've been well cared for, and then they are scraped and they're replaced with, like, a dozen to two dozen, either townhomes or even unattached dwellings that have no space, like, no green space, no trees. They're all like slot home style, like, tends to be. They're a lot, very cement-heavy, they are often built with cheap materials, and then they are selling for a lot of money, like, much more than that individual home on the larger lot would have. And I'm generally pro-density, but that in particular, right, is like at odds to me with some of these things. So I don't, if you could, if you have any guidance or right questions to be asking in our future research on that, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. We're actually talking about something different than that, though. The zoning, I'm not familiar with which project you're talking about, perhaps the Director would be. But if that was zoned for single-family, if it was R16, they could not build that project. So the, if the zoning allowed multifamily, if it allowed attached multiple dwellings on the same lot, that's a different zoning that we're talking about. What we're talking about in the lower lot size is still single-family residential just on a smaller lot. It is not eliminating any of the requirements for setbacks. It would be logical if we, and this is commonly referred to a lot of times as, remember, we have R112, R19, R16, this could be R10, which means there isn't a minimum lot, but there are still dimensional requirements. There's still our setbacks, there's still our height limitations. We are really still talking about detached, single-family homes. So the circumstance that was described would not be the kind of circumstance we're talking about here.
I think that actually the specific, the specific product I'm thinking of actually is the circumstance, where the lot itself has been broken up, and so there are detached homes that will be for sale in a place where there had been a single. So I guess, even regardless of that one project, still the question to me of, why then wouldn't, like, what would prevent? How could we pursue the question of how we would prevent investors from, like, buying a large lot with a single home that is currently naturally occurring supply? When there is even in a more affordable housing, there's so much profit to be made if you're able to, like, sort of infinitely subdivide and build smaller units.
Well, that's ultimately a policy question. There are housing products that a lot of people would love and feel very lucky to be able to buy into. We talk a lot about cottage homes, where maybe a larger lot is divided, and you have a whole row, or maybe two rows, that all the front porches face each other, and there's green space between them. And they are separately deeded, separately sold, and it's a, it's a really close-knit community. If we do not want to encourage that, if we would like to have larger homes on larger lots and not allow that, then the current structure is the way to go. If we would like to open up to maybe some of those, and again, they could be mapped so that they're only in appropriate places. But this notion is one that allows another possible ownership opportunity at a more affordable price point.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Two questions. There was a question on Lakewood Speaks about the draft versus the resolution. I just want to make sure I'm seeing G as the addition, and it wasn't on the draft. But was there something else that we needed to be mindful of in that?
And, and I will defer to the Director. I'm not sure why the draft was posted. It had Um, it had been posted uh, before the Planning Commission and we received comments on it, but the one with G was what was actually voted on and approved.
Got it. Um, so my question is really a process question. Uh, I took some time with the housing plan. This beautiful graph that we have that puts the strategies and the measurable goals, and I was able to map A, D, E, and C to like explicit goals that we've already agreed that we want to take a quick look at. Maybe there's more. It was a fast mapping exercise. And so my question is, uh, I like all of this. I think all of this is worth talking about. We're getting ready to have a workshop. It's also clear that the housing plan or Policy Commission is doing their own um, prioritizing. And so for things that aren't matched to the housing plan that we do wanna discuss, are we, is this gonna be included in the workshop?
So is the question, are all of, all seven of these suggestions gonna be included in the workshop?
Right. So if we, and Mr. Kolkmeier, maybe you can speak to this, like a lot of this is like, you've handed us, like, here it is, friends, like the housing plan is saying one thing, here's reinforcing some recommendations that we have. But not everything is so easy to map back to those original strategies that were in that housing plan. So would these still be available, or are they gonna be included in the discussion we have at the workshop? Like, will this body, this resolution be included?
So yeah, I, absolutely. All of these things are available at the workshop. And in fact, I don't think the workshop is limited to uh, specific goals from the housing workshop. The, the workshop is a, is a opportunity for city council to set the policies, and I think the guidelines from the housing plan, the guidelines from these planning commission recommendations are a good starting point, but not a limitation.
Got it. Thank you. That's really helpful to understand. Um, I think that was, that was it for me then.
Okay, councillor Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, um, thank you for all this work. Excited to dig into so many of these strategies. Um, for the inclusionary um, kind of research that you all did, I do wanna just echo my co-councillor, yeah, Garros. Uh, I excitement about thinking about this um, from both of um, ownership and from a rental perspective, I think um, that that is important, and I think was reflected in some of the ways that you highlighted how those were kind of interchangeable strategies in other municipalities. So thank you for doing that. I know it mentions for the incentive based inclusionary zoning program, I know you mentioned that Denver has gotten a lot of money from the fee and loo. What kind of investment have other municipalities from your research put into some of these incentive based programs? Like what's the kind of like realm of money we're looking at, if you have that answer?
I'm afraid I do not. Um, and, and that would be um, you know, a key thing, it seems to me to, to drill into. Where, where, we were really focused on, is this a tool worth pursuing? Rather than, you know, here's exactly the way the tool ought to be shaped. Um, and uh, and, and the other thing which you just noted councillor, which I think is very important. Um, we were only asked about ownership, affordable ownership, not rental. Inclusionary zoning is more often thought about um, in the rental context. If we ever get developers to build condos again, uh, which someday hopefully they will, um, then the, the uh, inclusionary zoning for the for sale on those um, could be very, very meaningful. Um, because those are traditionally less expensive starter ownership opportunities anyway. Um, but I'm sorry, we don't have the kind of specifics on the dollars that could be expected to be um, achieved through any particular program.
That's helpful, helpful context. Um, and this is a question that maybe will just be more of a statement on my end, because I guess if it's not in here, it wasn't necessarily in y'all's research, but just curious too, with like um, community land trusts that I know are providing affordable ownership opportunities, um, including condos that I think are just buildings that they're, they're somebody is helping them to buy, and then that they're selling to folks at an affordable price. Like, is that, is that, is that something that came up in y'all's research? Or was there anything else that wasn't included kind of in what you all showed us tonight?
Yeah, there were other things, and there was a little bit of discussion about that. This resolution will uh, uh, contains the seven items that received unanimous support. Um, it is not meant to say that there are not other things worth pursuing, uh, but these are the ones that the commission felt um strong enough to deliver to you unanimously.
Totally. That's helpful. Um, and then a question, kind of going back to the lot size um, conversation. Uh, just um, from my information or for everybody's information, like, does this kind of um, shrinkage of um of lot sizes, does that also apply to like the, the ability to have tiny homes, or is that kind of a different issue than the single family home conversation?
Yeah, so a lot of these terms, um, it depends on who's using them, that exactly what um, you mean. Um, we were thinking about uh, that tiny home is often something that is, is mobile. Uh, you know, it's, it's on a trailer and it can be moved from place to place. Maybe you do set it down permanently someplace. Um, we like the term cottage homes because those are meant to be small foundation. They have a foundation, they have a smaller footprint, uh, but they are truly a single family residence like a cottage would be.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. I just, this is bringing back to a conversation I had with a constituent who was renting in Lakewood because they couldn't um, put their single, their tiny home, which was more of a mobile home on a lot. Um, so I think that, just wanted to bring that into the conversation, my last question, and then I will concede my time. Um, uh, just maybe this is for Director Parker, but just wanna better understand for this subdivision question, how some of the like multifamily um, kind of zoning versus single family zoning might look like in this subdivision conversation, because as my co-councillor mentioned, that's a very um, heated conversation, I would say, in our area, that I wanna be able to make sure we have the right information to move forward on discussing.
Yeah, the, these are, they, they are two separate issues, and, and much of your work, uh, Ward councillor Cruz, where we're seeing yeah, the, the purchase of lots and splitting up into townhome is zoned for multifamily and mixed use and and was intentionally done so in 2012, right, when the stationary planning was done around the West Line and, and there was a lot of desire for investment and, and, and you know, reinvestment in that area. Um, and it resulted in that, and maybe, you know, in, in too dense a way, that, that's, that's, you know, debatable on each person, but but yes, in, in your ward, there's really more a situation where there's multifamily and mixed use zoning that is transforming traditionally single family neighborhoods into more attached neighborhoods. And then other parts of the city, it's, it's a different scenario where there is still, you know, single family only zoning and it doesn't allow any changes right now, whereas the planning commission's recommendation would maybe allow you know, additional single family homes on smaller lots. Two separate issues.
And, and I might just add um, uh, something on that, which is that um, you know, with larger lots, uh, and, and this is kind of like the ADU conversation, we can change the rules, but that doesn't mean that things are gonna suddenly change. Because even on larger lots, very often the house is placed squarely in the middle. So there really isn't a way to carve off a part here or a part there. Um, but there may be circumstances where someone's on a 12,000 square foot lot and the house meeting all the setbacks and other dimensional requirements is far enough to one side that maybe a 5,000 square foot, you know, lot could be subdivided. That's a whole process that the property owner would have to go through to do that, but it might create the opportunity for a new entry level house. Um, but we should not expect that these sorts of things are gonna dramatically change the landscape because you're still talking about single family only on the lot.
And, and not to, not to keep adding on, but I did wanna go back to something that was talked about earlier about um, existing single family houses on large lots being purchased and converted into, into multiple you know, homes on those lots. And, and I think some of the councillor members had, had talked about, well, maybe there's a way to preserve that, that small home on that large lot as, as, you know, existing affordable and it could continue to be affordable. The market doesn't really allow that. When, when that house goes up to sale, there's really two options. One is somebody comes and buys it and builds a much larger single family home on that lot. And the other is somebody splits it up and builds multiple small. Um, and so when we see that in, in your word especially councillor Cruz, where people are buying these large lots and putting six townhomes on them, there was never really an option for that small pre-war house to stay, right? When that goes up for sale, it's either gonna be a 4,000 square foot mansion, or it's, you know, for a million and a half, or it's gonna be six townhomes at half of them. And so that, that's really the, the choice that's available based on the market in those areas.
All right, councillor Low and councillor Ryan and councillor Singh.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanna put in a quick plug for um, for recommendation B. I mean, I, I, I do, I hear the discussion and, and it's a, it's a thoughtful discussion. And a-again, I go back to uh, we, we are hearing a, an urgent need from our constituents for, for um uh, affordable housing for purchase. And it, it, at a, at a fairly elemental level, and I've, I've talked a little bit to Mr. Kolkmeier about this, I've, I've had a chance to talk to some of our planning commissioners that have dug into this little bit. I mean, one of, I think an ob, it's not gonna fix the problem, but an obvious step we can take is to make, is to create this new zoning designation, this R10 designation that allows for people to buy single family homes on a smaller plot of land, right? I mean, uh, why, why would we wanna keep this requirement that if you're gonna buy a single family home, it's gotta be a certain lot size, right? I mean, that just obviously um, creates a, a minimum threshold that any, anyone has to pay to purchase a single family home. And, and, and as a simple matter of equity, I think that's wrong, right? I think we wanna be in a, in a city where people can buy homes at smaller lots. Um, obviously, we're not, you know, this recommendation is not to suddenly car- carpet Lakewood with, with that designation, but it simply creates a tool in the tool shed that could be used in very targeted, specific ways for, you know, small families that are, um, you know, as councillor Stewart has eloquently talked about, that are really struggling to, to, to become first time home buyers, to, to put that dream a little bit more in reach for them. So I would be an enthusiastic vote for moving forward on this. Um, I, I do have one question, I think primarily directed at Mr. Parker. I, I, my, my other thought is I, I really do um, agree very much with, with the points that councillor Matt Guerrero and councillor Cruz already brought up. Um, I would venture to, so I, I waxed poetic about how much I, I, how enthusiastic I was about a lot of the recommendations in the Strategic Housing Plan. There's a lot of great stuff in there. I'm really excited that we approved that, and I'm excited that, that we're gonna have a workshop to dig into that. I agree, the one thing I think a number of us had questions about was the sort of this declaration that um, inclusionary zoning has some challenges, right? I, I think that um, there's no question that inclusion, inclusionary zoning probably adds something to the, the cost of, of, of building, you know, multifamily developments for rental. Right? That's something to, to consider for sure, if we, if we want more of them. And I think that we do as part of our affordable housing strategy. But I also think that we have a very strong interest in creating more affordable housing below market rate, right? I, I think there's a real need for that. And I, I do think that um, that an inclusionary zoning policy, if coupled with some other policies that we're already tossing around, that would sort of maybe reduce some of the, the barriers or some of the costs to, to building multifamily units could be feasible. So maybe that's too much detail. For, for now, I think my question is, um, whether it's from the LAC or from the Planning Department or from the Planning Commissioner, some combination of them, I, I would really like to see some sort of landscape analysis of the places, not, you know, Denver and Boulder for sure, but you know, I know, for instance, I, I believe that um, Broomfield and Longmont also have inclusionary uh, zoning um, policies in place, if I'm not mistaken. I think it'd be extremely helpful to just take a look at, you know, what is the threshold requirement? Like how, is it 10%, 15%? What is the AMI? Is it 60%, 80, 80%? Um, uh, and what is the, how is the fee and loo structure, right? Like how much does a developer have to pay if they're not gonna do this? Um, and is it working? Is it discouraging development, or is it, is it working? Something like that, it seems to me, and I, I, it seems aggressive to ask for that by the workshops, that's probably not reasonable, but, but having that in front of us to, to look at before we make a, a consequential decision about inclusionary zoning, I think is a really good step. So I'm, I'm hoping one thing we could maybe take out of tonight is a commitment that one way or another, we'll, we'll get that in our hot little hands.
We'll certainly work on that. And, and, and I think you identified the, the most important thing to think about as you're designing your inclusionary zoning process is the, the economic 101 concept of, of diminishing returns, right? If you sell an ice cream cone for 25 cents, you're gonna sell a ton, but not make much money. If you sell them for 10 bucks, you're not gonna sell any, and you're not gonna make any money. And so a, a policy like Boulder's that says, we're gonna get 25% uh, you know, units, and we're gonna get them at 60% AMI. What they're really doing is saying, we don't want anybody to build any housing in Boulder. They're not getting a lot of affordable housing in Boulder under that policy. And so it's, it's setting the right standards for, for your market, and that's gonna be the real challenge.
Right. I mean, in my, I'm just, studies say, I'm just throwing this, I mean, in my head, the, the perfect policy would be something where, like about half of the developers paid a fee and loo. And then maybe we took some of that money and put it in Affordable Housing Fund, and maybe it even subsidized, slightly subsidized some genuinely affordable, you know, 60% AMI units that the other half of the developers said, you know what, we're actually gonna, this is structured in a way that we actually think we can set aside some money for affordability. But no, I, I totally agree, Mr. Parker. And that's exactly why I'm asking for this. I, I think the deep, if we're going to do this, the details of how we design it and, and where we set those dials matter enormously. Because certainly, speaking for myself, I think the goal should be um, a policy that actually makes more affordable housing available, not that stops developers from building multifamily units. Um, and so to, to that end, I think, you know, since I, as I understand, it's been a few years at this point, and a number of jurisdictions have put in place this, these um, different versions of this policy. Some sense of, you know, who's, who's doing it in a workable way and who's not would be a really good starting point for us.
We'll work, as you said, I don't know how much we'll have by May 20th, but we'll work on it.
Thank you. And I know we've given, I know there's already a lot on your plate, so I'm, I'm, I totally appreciate that. Um, uh, and I, I defer to you and, and Ms. Hodgson and, and, and the staff on who, what the, whether it's a consultant or what the best way is to do this, but I, I think it's a really important piece of the puzzle.
Well, and let me add to that, the workshop is not where we're going to be able to flush through all of the details about all of the things. We're not, you know, it won't be a three day affair or even a two day affair. So that will be, you know, what we'll do, the way I envision how this would work is we're, we're talking more kind of high level uh, prioritization. And then that's where we, you know, push that out, and we start to look at some of these more nuancey details after and leading up to, again, future study sessions and things like that. So there's a lot of stuff, as you very addict, you know, quickly pointed out, with inclusionary zoning, there's a ton that's involved in that. So there will be probably multi-step for us to come to that um, conversation. And with that, I'll just make a quick note, I know we, again, we've got more councillors that have hands up. But tonight is not necessarily, the intention of tonight is to not necessarily identify individual strategies within this, it's just to, to identify what the Planning Commission has identified, sorry, I said two words, same thing. Um, as opportunities for us to look to increase specifically ownership, and then from here, we get to take that forward and to go through these a little bit more in depth. So if that informs anybody else that's looking at speaking tonight, we don't necessarily have to go in the weeds on any of these specific things. This is really for us to hear the work that the Planning Commission has worked on. Um, with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to councillor Ryan.
Thank you very much. And this isn't really a question, but it really a request. We have a lot of information that a lot of groups have gathered, going, uh, tagging along with councillor Lowe's uh, discussion about trying to gather some information. So we, we had a housing study, so we had consultants. Um, and they have gathered a lot of information, uh, and a lot of that's in the study itself, but there's data that they've gathered that it would be wonderful if we could get access to. Uh, the Planning Commission has done a lot of uh, study and hopefully you have that, that you'd be able to share with us, short of us having to go back and watch, watching each of those uh, that you'd be able to share with us, short of us having to go back and watch, watching each of those uh different discussions. And so hopefully that's right. Uh, so I'm hoping that the planning commission can share the the valuable information that you guys have gathered. And I suspect city staff has some additional information on all of this as well. I'm just hoping that there could be a place where all these different sources of data that someone has already taken the valuable time to gather can be put in one place for us to sort through. And hopefully with city staff's um informed uh expertise can help us make sense of all of that data. So that's my request.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Stink.
And just just to clarify the dates, so I heard May 20th is a study session. Has the workshop been calendared yet or is that, so that's separate, is that correct?
May, May 20th is the workshop.
S- sorry, May 25th?
20th is the work.
20th is the workshop. So it's just the the 7 o'clock study session that will have a few hours. And uh, so if we have questions before then, should we direct them to um Mr. Parker, Mr. Kolkmaier?
Let's, let's, um, if I may, let's have those questions and concerns please sent directly to Travis Parker in advance and he'll he'll help sort those through to the planning commission or wherever else they should go. And we have a 6 o'clock start date for that workshop on the 20th, just thinking I it, rather than going deep into the night, we can carve some time before so we have that starting at 6, if that's amenable to y'all.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And Counselor Stink and everyone, um, our workshops, they tend to be in, oh boy, and I'm forgetting, whatever the the council room is that's upstairs, right outside of city manager's office. So it's not on the diet, a little bit more of a casual conversation as we peel through all of these. And I would encourage, highly encourage, yes, questions, please, in advance. Because what that gives us the opportunity to do is have a building, building upon a document where it can then be shared out to everybody in advance of coming back to that meeting. So we all have the answers to all of the questions. It works um swimmingly when we go through the budget process that way. And um, so yes, I would encourage everybody to email questions in advance. Um, did you have any more, Counselor Stink?
No.
Okay, Counselor Over.
Thank you. Uh, I was gonna follow up uh with what Counselor Lowe was talking about. Oh, got his attention. Um, and I was writing something down here that I was thinking that our process, what we're doing here is not the best. It it or let's just say it could be improved, uh, cause I was thinking exactly along the same lines. I was thinking about, well, why aren't we bringing in experts on on this topic? And this applies to almost every topic we talk about, I mean, not just this study session, other study sessions or things like that. But what what I was thinking about is like, there's obvious people, obviously are people in Boulder, Denver, uh, Broomfield, Longmont, and some other places um, who have been living this kind of thing. Their their full-time job is to organize this and to try it and they know how it's working and they know uh what the upsides are, what the pitfalls are, the downsides. And that, I think we're only guessing that. And and I'm not so sure that we've seen any, in my my time here, any outside experts. Uh, you know, it's always staff and of course, staff is doing a lot of work and I get that part and talking to a lot of people. But staff isn't living this. And the planning commission isn't living this. It's that there are people whose job it is to know all about this kind of stuff. And and I'd love to invite them in and hear what they have to say. And I'd love to invite in some people where it's, it's, it's worked. And and uh, and they're all gung ho about it and I'd love to invite some people in where it didn't work or and they're not gung ho about it, they they kind of, you know. I'd love to hear more than one side. That seems to be what we get here all the time. It's it's like, here's what we think and here's why you should do it, uh, and we don't get the other side. And but I think this outside experts would really help on something like this. Basically, government has been trying for decades, my entire life uh, to to do something about affordable housing. Um, I I grew up in Pennsylvania and we would go into New York City to go to baseball games at Yankees and Mets. Uh, and and to get there, we had to go through Jersey where they had something called the projects. That's what we all call them anyway. Giant 20-story buildings, concrete or brick or whatever. Uh, and it was all before, well, back then it was called government subsidized housing. Now it's called affordable housing. And and it just didn't work. And those things were torn down, I mean, and that was in the late 60s and it wasn't working. And so I I'd really love to know more so that we don't make the exact same mistakes that have been made many times before. Uh, and so like finding examples of where this actually works uh would be great. I'd love to hear that kind of stuff and would love to follow along into something that actually works. And and I was also very happy when you said affordable housing ownership, because that was half the problem back there. It wasn't ownership and people just don't have a stake if they don't own it, if they don't at least a piece. So that's a really huge thing. And that's all I'm gonna leave it at. I got a lot of other things that I was writing down to talk about. But I think that's more important that we look at our process on how we, as a council, make decisions and who we're listening to and how many chances we get to hear multiple sides of the same question. Thanks a lot.
Counselor Stewart.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of our planning commissioners for digging in on both of these topics and presenting us with these recommendations to move forward with. Um, yeah, I'm, I, Counselor Sharzai asked my process question um already, so I appreciate that. I'm just excited for the opportunity to um kind of fold in some of these very specific homeownership specific ideas into our workshop uh and um look forward to that. But mostly I just wanted to express my appreciation for all of the work you did uh and and coming to us with these recommendations. I'm excited to have deeper discussion on some of them and hopefully implement some of them moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart. And I will take the opportunity to actually do another plug for the Colorado Municipal League Conference is coming up in June. This is the kind of co, the kind of topic that is, is, I mean, we know this is a regional challenge. This is a statewide challenge and the Colorado Municipal League is there to help us solve these very complex situations and very much has um experts from all over the place that come in and speak on these issues. So for anyone that is looking um like Counsel Over for more expert background, that is definitely an opportunity. I do feel like we've had a lot of that with Gruen and Gruen being involved and then also having Metro West be part of this conversation on and off as well. We've had a number of providers. So um with that, just keep an eye on your email. Actually, I think the registration actually did already go out. Let me know if you've got any questions. We'd be happy to share with everybody more details about that. And we'll go ahead, well, for one, I'll stop. Commissioner Kolkmaier and Director Parker, again, thank you very much for being part of this conversation and all the work that you guys did to get us here this evening. Um, and then we will transition over for any of our chairs of our committee. We do now again have committee reports included with our study session. So um please raise your hand. We'll give you a few seconds if anybody would like to make a report about any of our committees, boards and commissions. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Thank you. We had a, we haven't had a second housing uh policy commission meeting since our last study session. I don't believe, or it was at the beginning, no, no, I, we haven't. But our next one is next week. Um, and what we're going to be discussing is very related to all of these things, trying to prioritize and get some consensus on our top, our top recommendations to city council of some of what we think are some easy steps to be taking uh out of the um strategic housing plan and also some recommendations of things that we think should sort of stay with the body of the whole versus like need the time and attention that can happen within a committee, which is why we have committees. You can do deeper research, deeper discussion, deeper community engagement. Um, and again, none of that will be binding. It's just a way for us to uh help help to contribute to the the workshop conversation that's coming in May. Um, and then no, I'll keep that for there. I just have more upcoming committees, but nothing actually to report. I will do that next study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Per Tim Sharzai.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just a reminder that we have vacancies on boards and commissions and we're all committed to seeing geographic diversity and that representation. So encouraging folks to help promote those opportunities, particularly with um the Lakewood Advisory Commission. Um, Noxious Weeds always has openings, um Judicial Review Commission as well. So we really wanna um get as many folks as we can uh involved in this. And applications are open now through April 12th and we're doing additional interviews in May. So asking for support and getting the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission or committee reports? Well, we shall go ahead and adjourn then. Um, it is 9:17 PM. And I will see everybody back next Monday night in prison for hybrid. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.